Okay, now we'll open the Urbana City Council meeting. And we're just going to start with the approval of the minutes?
We need a minute to get the case changed.
Okay, did you need to do a roll call on this one or not?
Yeah.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Here.
Ms. Chinowith?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
First item is, well, actually, I think we should have petitions at communications first, right? I don't know why that's listed as number three. Is there anyone who'd like to address the city council? I have Tyler Fitch.
Hello?
Could you state your name and address, please?
I'm Tyler Fitch. I'm a resident of 503 East California Avenue and a Huni Commissioner. Last week, I appeared before the Committee of the Whole to discuss the entryway sign policy. There were a few clarifications. We expressed our support. There were a few clarifications we had asked for, a couple of more emerged in discussion. I saw a revised version of the policy. I think that the changes that were made are excellent and were consistent with the issues that we had raised and with the issues that I heard raised in council discussion. I just wanted to state that for the record and say thanks to Urbana Public Works for working with us on that and the council for taking the time to listen to us. I appreciate it.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I so move.
Yeah, I'd move approval of the September 19th council and September 26th special council minutes.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Bowersachs and seconded by Mr. Smythe. Are there any questions or any discussion? Or is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Yes, the motion was for two sets of minutes for the...
Yeah, I move that we approve the September 19th council and the September 26th special council minutes altogether.
Any additions to the agenda? Okay, any old business. Reports of standing committees. That would be you, Mr. Roberts, right?
Yes, it would be. Reporting the results of the Committee of the Whole, we have four items to bring to council. The first is ordinance number 2005-09-140, an ordinance requiring payment of storm water drainage connection fee relating to a certain tract, pin number 91-21-06-426-004, and number 91-21-06-426-009, the Marathon tract, for the council I so move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? There's a motion by Mr. Roberts and seconded by Mr. Smythe, and this would be a roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Roberts?
The second item from the Committee of the Whole that's been forwarded to council is a motion to approve the entryway sign policy. And for the committee, I so move its adoption.
Second.
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Roberts to approve the entryway sign policy, and it's seconded by Mr. Smythe. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Could we have discussion?
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. I'm basically totally in favor, well, pretty much 99 percent in favor of the ordinance as it's written. And I haven't quite, I still, I have a little, I guess I'd like to have discussion about the requirement that we need to have the approval of the property owner who's going to be adjacent to the sign, and that the approval has to be forwarded to the Public Works Director in some manner, showing that an individual has been contacted and approves the placement. I think it's good and neighborly to ask, to inquire and to, I guess, inform the neighbors where the sign will be placed to, that we are intending to do, that the city is going to erect a sign on their, in the parkway. I think it's just odd to get, to request that a program that's been approved by the city and sponsored and paid for by the neighborhood association would have then depend entirely upon the state of mind of one property owner to determine whether a sign could actually be located at the entrance to the neighborhood, at a certain, you know, at a certain entrance way. And I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to say that we would contact the property owner to inform them of the intent of placing a sign there, and if we hear no objection, we go forward and place the sign. I'm thinking that some property owners may live in Chicago and have really no concept about what might be occurring in the neighborhood or how it might look, and many other people may just not care in particular. And sometimes, well, I'm just thinking that it seems to be an extra, a rather extra effort to place a sign at the beginning of a street which is on public land and public parkway, is not on private land, and that other signs are erected on the street without concurrence of the neighborhood or of the neighbors. And I'm just wondering if that particular aspect of the ordinance is required, and if there's any comment on that and how people feel. I know that it's not just this one neighborhood ordinance association that's going to be potentially doing this in the future. I mean, this is a, this is a, the first case of a situation which may come up with other neighborhood designation signs. So I thought it'd just be worth asking about.
Mr. Gray, would you like to comment on that?
Just, I mean, we talked about this last Monday, and I defer to the wisdom of the council here, but I just thought that this is not like erecting a speed limit sign or a stop sign or something where, you know, for the good of the entire public, we want to send out a warning device or whatever, and we don't seek approval for those sorts of signs in the parkway. This is, I thought, a little bit different. We felt it was a little bit different, and it's a furlough, can be a furloughing large sign, and I think just being sensitive to what some people may object to, we thought it could be appropriately located, you know, near a place, but maybe not in front of a home. But we can go either way. We can inform folks and just tell them we're doing this, and that's that. We can go that route, too.
Ms. Chinowith?
I just think that people tend the right of way. They usually, they often grow gardens in the space. I have strawberries growing in my right of way. There are other, and so actually erecting a sign, even though it is not the property of the people who are there, who own the corner lot or the lot in question, it's that, they tend to that property, and so they have a responsibility for it. I just feel like it's a courtesy to property owners to make sure that they, you know, that they approve of the sign. So I wouldn't support taking that out of this ordinance.
If, can I?
I was going to call Ms. Barnes.
I would agree with Danielle that I think it's, we want to make sure that we can, in all cases, keep the city from being onerous in any way. And I think this is just a good example of us going out of our way to make sure that there's appropriate authority and approval. And then if someone doesn't want the sign, I think, then we look for another place to put it, of someone who would be willing to have it.
Mr. Roberts?
If the attempted contact is made either by letter or poster or doorbell ringing or whatever, and we don't hear from that property owner, or there's no response, or if, I mean, I was wondering if there would be a time when, if after two or three weeks of no response, would we want to consider that as a due process attempt and proceed? Or does that, would that nullify? If there's no response to our inquiry, would that be considered indication that we have to look for some, another place to do it, to post a sign?
Generally, over a period of a few weeks, we will make contact unless someone's sabbatical or something, but we'll be flexible, you know, with people. And if we hear nothing, and we put it up, and they don't like it because they're on a three-week vacation, you know, we'll work with people. I mean, it's not a rigid situation, so.
Okay, I can work with that, too.
Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve entryway signs, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Roberts?
The third motion to come before the city council is a resolution, number 2005-09-015R, a resolution determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy 2005. For the Committee of the Whole, I so move its adoption.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Finally, a resolution, number 2005-09-016R, a resolution in support of local franchising. The mayor?
Yeah, this is the resolution where we're asking our congressional representatives to oppose the laws that would take away the rights of local governments to franchise cable television. And we think we need this for openness in the cable system, as well as the fact that the franchise revenue is an important part of our budget for those two things.
I second.
Okay, so was the motion made by somebody?
I made the motion for the committee.
Okay, Mr. Roberts and then Mr. Lewis seconds it.
Mayor?
Discussion?
Any questions?
Just a comment, if we could make sure that the resolution gets to the senators' and representative office in due speed, because I know that according to Durmond's office, there was a senate hearing on this issue last Tuesday, so it is a hot issue. It's moving through Congress, and we need to get it to them as soon as possible.
Okay, I will get it done tomorrow.
Thanks.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Reports of special committees.
I would just like to announce that I think the next meeting of the Committee of the Whole will be on Monday, October 10th, at 7:00 PM, and Brandon will be leading the proceedings.
Okay, reports of officers.
Yes, let me take an opportunity to pass out the economic development report for last month and touch on a few things, a few highlights. Just moving around the city, we're working with the village, Lincoln Square Village to complete the second floor space. On that project, you might have noticed, though, there's substantial progress on Walgreens. We expect that that will be open in October. And the strip center, which will have brick facades to match the Walgreens, is now under construction to the rear and to the north of the Walgreens. We're still working on the Gill Building. There's problems involved with the location of the utilities for that site, but we're continuing to work on that. As far as other projects, you might be interested, the Omnicare Labs has purchased the building, which was the former Michelle's building next door, and they will be remodeling, expanding that building for an orthopedics business, so that'll be a vacant building that will be occupied in and around the city buildings, so that's good. Work continues on O'Brien's in the north. We're struggling with some issues there now in regard to utility, overhead utility lines along O'Brien Drive. These appear to be in conflict with some of the lighting that he wants to do on this regional center, and again, this is low, low lines that are located in the right of way that are above ground, not below ground, which creates that problem. But we're working with him to try to figure out if there's any way we can either bury these lines or work with utility companies to relocate them. But that's a significant problem that we're working on with engineering. The old Shamrock Tavern that was on North 45 has been demolished, and that will be a retail business, a new construction that will be located on that site on North 45. Our friends at Holiday Inn continue to work on the Holiday Inn Express and other plans for that area on North Lincoln. You just approved the Amulco Project, and if you've noticed also, on North Lincoln, the Capstone Project is now under construction. This is the, what I call Student Condo Project, which is on North Lincoln Avenue. In East Urbana, the Super Walmart is coming along quite nicely now, and I just, we don't, it's a bet when it will be open, but they're certainly making great progress. If you've noticed, the Aldi is now under construction there at, near Behringer. We're continuing to work on our 130 corridor plan, and also, we're continuing to work on the auction that's upcoming on Pepper Airs. That's a significant undertaking. That's a court-ordered partition suit that requires the auction of nearly 300 acres, and we'll be holding two public information meetings as a part of that auction process. City staff will be discussing and reviewing plans or plans to purchase with potential bidders and developers. Other highlights, we're beginning to work on Gregory Place Two with the developer also. We've been informed that there will be a female apparel shop located in one of the vacant spaces on the first floor of Gregory Place One. We continue to work with Chris Creek on the planning for the Kmart site. And another one I'd like to touch on tonight is the Prairie Winds. As part of Prairie Winds, if you remember when that was approved, that project was approved, there were multiple uses, residential uses that we approved in that plan in Platte. And Mr. Tatman has informed us in the last couple of weeks that he did receive approval from the state for a assisted senior facility to be located there. This would be more of a market rate, although tax credit, facility. So in the next week, I expect that we will be providing a staff memo to you, wherein we would provide an inducement resolution. I know this council hasn't done those in the past, but previous councils, Charlie may remember inducement resolutions, I don't know. But we do those where there are revenue bonds that will be issued to assist the developer in the construction of these projects. It would be conduit financing. The city would not be at all a guarantor on the bonds. It was just in name only. We would provide this assistance. It also may involve allocation of tax credits from the city for the use. So we'll go into that in more detail next Monday night, but it appears that that's going to be ready for discussion, and I'd be happy to answer questions along the way if you have them. Continue to work on Southeast Urbana, Country Market, Water Zed subdivision, the Marathon at the corner of Florida, and Philo should be starting. We had our ribbon cutting on the Sunny China buffet. We did receive approval to that very important enterprise zone application extension for Southeast Urbana. All of us worked on that, including the mayor, and trying to get those approvals in place. And we did, several of you participated in the city developer luncheon last Friday or the Friday before at Kennedy's, where we had about 70 developers and realtors that attended a meeting, which was a very, very good meeting in terms of our developer group. The rest of them are sort of ongoing activities that we're undertaking. We did do some retention visits. Len and I did meet with Sunny Crest Mall owner last Thursday or Tuesday.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday, and expect to have something come from that. And that's about it for right now. A lot of things going on.
Ms. Barnes?
Do you have any idea when we'll actually see some change in Kmart and also the Marathon lot?
Well, they, I don't know if Libby knows anymore about the Marathon lot. They did move the construction trailer on the site. The remediation received clearance from all the appropriate approving agencies. The plans now have received approval from engineering and the location of the driveways and all, which was something that we needed to discuss with the owners and developers, and that's all been cleared now, so we're just waiting for them to actually start. There's no permitting issues now, just waiting for the contractor to start.
It's supposed to there, okay.
It's going to happen.
And then Chris Creek?
In terms of Kmart, we've just been able to see a couple of drafts, set of plans on possible layouts for the facilities, locations of buildings and retail, but that's really about, it's still in the preliminary planning stage.
I thought we were going to be tearing down the...
I think that that's still going to happen pretty quickly.
Mr. Roberts?
So the Marathon site is the place where we had those, we sank those extra wells for quality testing of the land?
That's correct.
And that turned out to be a satisfactory result?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
It is great.
Surprising.
Ms. Chinowith?
I have a couple of questions. When will you hear about Lincoln Square Village? What's the next update?
Well, I've invited Jim Webster to come to the city council, a committee meeting, whatever we can work out, to give the council a briefing on whom the next phases will be undertaking and what those plans look like, because they've changed a little bit. So I'm still trying to work out a date with him. He's agreed to make the presentation.
Okay. Second question is, is there a tenant for the Stratford residencies yet for the office or retail space?
The Stratford is complete. The office retail space is not yet complete. I don't think there is a tenant at this point, but I, maybe someone else on staff has heard. I have not heard of that, so.
Okay, and then the third question is the...
It looks, the project is just beautiful.
Mm-hmm, it looks, it's quite nice. The Route 130 corridor plan, is that the, is that the Regional Plan Commission plan that they've been working on, or is that something else?
Yeah, that's that, but that involves a lot of city staff input into that, and that is still ongoing. To be quite honest, we've really focused on the land development issues associated with the Pepper Auction in the last few weeks, and we'll be putting out some information on that this week.
Yeah, could we be kept up to date in terms of how that plan progresses?
Yeah.
It was on our council goals, and we'd like to see that.
Absolutely.
That's it, thanks.
Mr. Smythe?
And I'm going to, I'm going to ask my favorite question. Where are we on the ED director position? Are we advertising a position yet?
We're not advertising yet, but we're getting a lot closer to it. We're also talking about this week, the advertisement for police chiefs, so we're working on those two. Hopefully, we can get past one tonight and move on to the next one.
Ms. Barnes?
Question about the county plaza and Joe Petries.
Yes.
Has he been able to fill that retail, that space?
No. He's still working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to give a report. I've got four items, and the first is an award. The city of Urbana got the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report for 1994. Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And the individual who is responsible for this, we'd like him to come forward. It's Ron Eldridge, our controller. Ron says it's the 18th year.
Eighteenth consecutive year.
And I have a proclamation by the mayors of the cities of Champaign and Urbana, which I'd like to read. Whereas hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority, and whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity, excuse me, into daily routine, and whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution, and whereas an important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trip to school each day, and the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution, and whereas community leaders and parents can determine the walkability of their community by using a walkability checklist, and whereas community members and leaders should make a plan to make immediate changes to enable children to safely walk and bicycle in our communities, and develop a list of suggestions for improvements that can be done over time, and children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities. Now therefore, we, Gerald J. Schwehart, Mayor of the city of Champaign, and Laurel Runt Pressing, Mayor of the city of Urbana, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 5th, 2005, to be International Walk to School Day, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children today and every day in the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois. And I'd like Cynthia Hoyle to come and accept this proclamation. And I'll be walking with children at King School on Wednesday. Thank you very much, Cynthia. Okay, we are having a joint study session with the city of Champaign Council and the county board to discuss our difficulties with the county changing the funding of fringe roads, and that will be held on Wednesday, October 12th, at 7:30. Okay, the last thing is that October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have some information that was given out today at the university. And I'd like to point out that Urbana has a historic role in this. I think A Woman's Place was one of the, if not the first in the whole country, about 34 years ago, it was founded in Urbana. And next year, we're planning to put a historic plaque up, and they'll get people from around the country who used to live in Urbana and help set this up 35, it will then be 35 years ago. So, moving on to the next item, new business.
Mayor, Ms. Mayor?
Oh, we have another?
Yeah, just very quickly, could I, could I ask that we get our sound system and options put on next week's agenda, please?
We're trying to get the sound system fixed for October 12th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Bill Gray, our Public Works Director.
One item, tomorrow night, there's going to be a meeting held at the gymnasium of Martin Luther King Elementary School at 7:00 to talk about parking matters, parking issues in the area west of Goodwin and north of the Provena Covenant Hospital. Appears to be a lot of parking during the daytime going on, primarily from University of Illinois, students, faculty, staff, what have you, and so we'll get some feedback from residents as to how to address this matter. So all are welcome to attend.
Okay. Dennis Roberts?
I'd just like to remind everybody that one of the first Thursdays sponsored by the Urbana Police Department is going to occur this week, October 6th. It's going to be held at the Vineyard Fellowship Christian Church, and it's going to be an opportunity for the community to interact with the police department and learn about topics that are of interest to the neighborhoods, and an opportunity to interact with police personnel. It's going to be, if you have questions about it, you can contact Dan Bylee, and, no, that's Dan Billy?
Beely.
Is that correct?
Beely.
Beely, yes. And anyways, it's the second of an ongoing series of talks that the Urbana Police Department has created to better interact with the citizens of Urbana.
What time, Dennis?
7:00 in the evening.
Thank you. Under new business, we have ordinance number 2005-10-146, an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow the establishment of a church or temple in the R3 single and two-family residential zoning district in its planning case number 1956-SU-05.
Good evening. This is a case from the Plan Commission that was for the Church of the Living God. They've submitted a request to allow a church at 1701 North Carver of the Living God. They've submitted a request to allow church at 1701 North Carver Drive, which is located in Urbana at the end of Federal Drive off North Lincoln, and it's located at the northern terminus of Carver Drive and Dory Miller Drive, which is in the City of Champaign. The property's zone R3 Single and Two Family Residential. A special use permit was previously approved for this site back in 2002, although the church has never developed, the site is planned, so the special use permit elapsed within a year of that date. So the church has submitted a revised site plan, and they're seeking to relocate the main and auxiliary buildings and kind of reconfigure the original parking lot layout. And if you pull out your site development plans, kind of go over where things are gonna be located now. As you can see in the northeast corner of the plan, there's Federal Drive. There'll be an access drive into the church's parking lot off of that location. It's approximately a 250 space parking lot with eight, I believe, eight handicap accessible spaces, and a drive around, or drive through at the front of the building for drop-off. To the south of the main church building, there's a covered walkway that will connect the church to the fellowship hall. The youth development center has been moved to connect more immediately with the fellowship hall, and they've added a pathway as well between those two buildings. There's a softball field that's located in the southwest corner of the lot, as well as the stormwater retention pond in the northwest corner. And as with the previously approved site plan, access is being prohibited via Carver Drive and Dory Miller Drive. This request had originally come out of neighborhood meetings with residents of the Carver Park subdivision to the south, and they were concerned about traffic coming up on Sundays and other days to the church's facility. So as a result, we've maintained the prohibition on access via those two roads for this case. The construction of the church is roughly divided into three phases. Phase one is the largest, comprising the main church building, the parking lot, softball field, and stormwater retention pond. Phase two would consist of the fellowship hall and connected walkway. And phase three would consist of the youth development center, although the petitioners have indicated that many of the functions of the youth development center could be incorporated into the fellowship hall, so that may negate the need for a third phase. On September 20th of 2005, the church held a neighborhood meeting, which staff from city planning attended, as well as staff from the City of Champaign, and residents from the Carver Park subdivision, and parishioners of the church. The greatest concern coming out of the neighbors was vehicular access once again from Carver Drive and Dory Miller Drive, and we asserted them that access would still be prohibited and only allowed via federal drive. And there was also concerns about the mass and location of church facilities. This is based on a recent example of another church locating close to residential properties. But as you can see at the site development plan, these buildings are going to be located farther away from the residential properties, and industrial properties to the north are already farther away from this site, and they're oriented towards alternate roads. And to the east here is the Caps, the Melrose Development, which has yet to develop the land immediately east of the subdivision. And the church has purchased the roughly 20 acres just west of this site, which is located in the City of Champaign, and they have indicated their desire to develop this area as a single-family affordable housing area that would serve the parishioners in the area. Champaign, the City of Champaign has indicated that they are analyzing the prospects of extending Fourth and Fifth Street in the City of Champaign north to serve this development, although there are some, there are some current road barriers with industrial uses along Bradley Avenue that prohibit this. And there is, there is the intention in the future, once this property is developed, to connect to the church's site in Urbana, which would be provided most likely as an access drive coming in from the west and connecting to the parking lot from the residential area. The site plan as we have it is conforming with all the parking, landscaping, drainage, setback, and other regulations of our zoning ordinance. According to Table 8-6, church or temple must provide at least one parking space for every five seats in the principal assembly area. The church has been proposed to have roughly 1,100 seats, which would require 220 parking spaces and seven handicap spaces. As I've mentioned, there's 100, or 250 parking spaces indicated on this and eight handicap spaces. This is obviously in excess of the requirement. Shade tree requirements for this site, the requirement of the zoning ordinance is one tree for every nine parking spaces. The entire site is going to have 49 trees planted per this plan, and 19 of these trees are going to be located in the parking lot. The remainder are going to serve as perimeter and building landscaping. This was a comment from the Plan Commission that there would be adequate landscaping along the southern property line especially, and also within the parking lot. And as you can see on the site development plan, there are significant tree plantings along the south to help beautify and screen to an extent the residential uses to the south. It's not the intent of the developers to wholly block access from the south. There's many parishioners from the church that would like to come, come north to worship, and so we weren't interested in putting up a fence or any sort of incredibly permanent form of barrier. The petitioner has indicated that they intend the majority of stormwater to be accommodated by the city's regional detention basin north of Kenyon Road. This is immediately north of the Howdan Express Site. Engineering would work with the petitioners, who have hired civil engineers, to determine the cost and the exact functions of doing so. As you know, there's also a stormwater retention pond indicated on this site. The architect for this site has indicated that the majority of this landscaping would be used for grading for the parking lot, although it would serve as a functional retention basin. And all buildings in the parking lot exceed minimum setbacks for the R3 Single Family Zone. And just kind of surrounding neighborhood, one of the larger residences to the south of Francis Nelson Health Center, that's at the terminus of Carver Drive. There's current, the site's currently vacant land, and to the east, as I had mentioned, the Campus Connections Apartments still has not developed that area, so that's currently vacant as well. To the south, there are single-family residences. They're zoned SF1 in the City of Champaign, and City of Champaign's comprehensive plan calls for the continued use of these properties as low-down city residential. The particular site in general, the 2005 comp plan calls for institutional uses. This is somewhat in anticipation that the church would come back at some point and redevelop this as a church. To the north is the Park 74 Industrial Subdivision, which is now fully developed, and our comp plan calls for continued light industrial and office uses. Into the east, I mentioned, is Campus Connection, and we obviously call for that to be multi-family. Kind of going over some of the comments from the Plan Commission hearing on September 22nd, 2005, there were three major concerns that the Plan Commission expressed. The first, as I've mentioned, is landscaping. The commissioners wanted to show that there would be proper landscaping installed throughout the site. There was a condition added to ensure this, and both the commissioners and petitioners were quite happy with this condition. The site plan, there was a discussion on the, the site plan is submitted to the Plan Commission, had the youth development center located further south and east. It was within, I believe, 25 feet of the southern property line, and the Plan Commission indicated their desire to have that moved to its current location, and the thought behind that was to allow easier conversion and expansion of the parking lot as the church expands to serve all of its members. And as we'd already discussed, there's the access to the west. Several commissioners had expressed a concern that if we provided access to the west via a driveway into the parking lot, that this would act as a de facto extension of federal drive. After some discussion, there was a feeling that most drivers, especially the industrial uses along federal drive, which include Federal Express and DHL, and other large trucking concerns, would realize that they're coming into a parking lot, and that this would pose no significant problem. Commissioners were also happy to note that Champaign was in talks to extend Fourth and Fifth Street, which they believe would provide access to the residential properties to the west without posing an undue burden on this site. All right, so the requirements for our special use permit, that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. The church intends to provide an expanded variety of services to the community, including a large assembly area, offices, and community space. This new building gives them adequate space to do so. That the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated, so not be detrimental to the district. As with the previously approved special use permit, we're prohibiting vehicular access via Carver and Dory Miller Drive, and the church's site plan shows access via federal drive. Drainage is going to be accommodated by the regional detention facility for the most part, and to a lesser extent, the retention pond, that's going to be constructed on the western half of the property, so this should minimize drainage concerns for neighbors. Lighting on the softball field is going to be limited to security lighting. This is added as a condition for the special use permit. Large lights that you would typically associate with a softball field or other playfield are going to be prohibited. And there's also going to be a significant number of new trees combined with existing plantings to help beautify the property. The parking lot and the majority of church buildings will be located on the northern half of the site, far enough away from residential on the south to limit mass, massing problems. That the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the district. As submitted, the church has taken steps to minimize impacts on nearby residences. This includes landscaping, vehicular access concerns. And as I've mentioned, the properties to the north and the east are currently oriented farther away from this property, and the landscaping should protect residents to the south. So summary findings for this plan case, that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience of this location. It would allow the church to provide more space for parishioners and to provide recreation and youth development services to the community. That the proposed church facility would not pose a detriment to the district in which it is proposed to be located. Drainage and access considerations have been addressed and should not create problems for surrounding communities. Access is going to be prohibited via Carver Drive and Dory Miller Drive. The proposed church facility meets all applicable standards and regulations of the district in which it is located. The church is in appropriate use for the R3 Single and Two Family Residential Zoning District. The proposed church facility is generally compatible with the existing land use pattern of the subject's site and surrounding areas, and the proposed church is consistent with the future land use of the subject property as identified in the 2005 comprehensive plan. So in Plan Case 1956-SU-05, the city council may approve the request for a special use permit without any additional conditions, may approve the request with any conditions deemed appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, or welfare, or you may deny the request. And based on the evidence presented in the discussion above, the Plan Commission and staff recommend that the city council approve Plan Case 1956-SU-05 with the following conditions. One, that the layout of the facility shall closely resemble the submitted site development plan attached as Exhibit G. Any significant deviation from this site plan will require an amendment to the special use permit, including further review by the Urbana Plan Commission and approval by the city council. That an engineered drainage plan, including proper conveyance and detention of stormwater from the site, shall be prepared and constructing, constructed, consistent with the requirements of the Urbana Subdivision Land Development Code, and shall be subject to the review and approval of the Urbana Zoning Administrator and Urbana City Engineer. That federal drive south shall serve as the exclusive vehicular access to and from the site to minimize impacts upon the adjacent residential neighborhood until such time as vehicular access from the west is developed. Vehicular access via Carver Drive and Dory Miller Drive shall be prohibited. There shall be no lighting provided for the softball field except for security purposes. Any lighting that is installed must be approved by the zoning administrator. And that a pedestrian connectivity plan shall be prepared and constructed, subject to the review and approval of the Urbana Zoning Administrator and Urbana City Engineer. And that a landscaping plan shall be prepared and constructed, subject to the review and approval of the Urbana Zoning Administrator in consultation with the Urbana City Arborist. So if you have any questions, I'd be free to take them.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes, thanks for your presentation. What is the future of Goodwin, of going north of Bradley Avenue? Is there any future, is there any planned extension of Goodwin?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know if, I don't know where Libby is.
Mr. Gray might know.
My understanding is that it's a part, the detention basin was a part of the state map. It's part of the right-of-way for Goodwin Avenue, and that's, that's what Mr. Gray can handle right now. I'll let him deal with it.
Yeah, Mr. Gray, is there, is there plans for a Goodwin Avenue extension to the north past Bradley Avenue?
No, there are no such plans for Goodwin Avenue north of Bradley Avenue.
Do you...
Actually, that is now pretty much physically impossible to do.
Because...
Well, it's not...
It's not developed at this point, but...
It's part of the conveyance to the detention basin.
Okay.
And I'd need to verify, but I'm not sure. The Phase Two of the Campus Connections Apartments own that property immediately north of Bradley Avenue.
I believe that's correct.
So it would, that would preclude a street going north.
Okay. This, this whole piece of property here, this whole area, actually reminds me a lot of the concerns that Public Works had about the Weaver Park connectivity issue. So we basically have an urban contiguous development happening to the north of Bradley Avenue and the west of Lincoln Avenue that doesn't seem to have adequate road access. As a result, what we have is a suburban development church being put into this location. Of course, 1,100 people, one might make a compelling reason to, to consider suburban development, where the only access to this location is through federal drive. So essentially, anyone who wants to go to this church is basically required to kind of do this loop-de-loop around to get access to the church. This, this came to the prior council, and I was not happy with this particular design, limiting access just through, from the north. I have the same concerns, and I guess, I have two questions. I'll start with two questions. One is, well, actually, first I asked Goodwin Avenue, the second is, what, what is the argument from the perspective of our, our planners here for allowing this kind of development? This is extremely unique compared to other things that we've seen, where our planners are always pushing for connectivity, our planners are always pushing for access to, to this, so that we don't necessarily just have one point of access, and we kind of have these little enclaves. So I'm, I guess I'm missing the compelling arguments from our staff as to why we chose to go with this particular model of planning.
It's, you've heard from other cases in the past, oftentimes adjacent neighborhoods will object to connectivity plans. If you remember Berrinry, the connection to Southridge, that was residential next to residential. In this case, with the church, there'd be an influx of traffic on one day, and it is good planning practice to work with neighborhoods and listen to neighborhoods. So sometimes those concerns might outweigh the connectivity concerns. As long as you've got good emergency access, I think limiting this access to the north makes sense, because we have wide roads, strong roads for the industrial uses. We feel that this makes the church a southernmost, southernmost extension of the industrial park. In terms of land use, this really made sense as either industrial or multifamily, but we don't always choose who purchases land and what comes forward. So I think, given the very strong preferences of the older neighborhood of Culver Park not to have this access drawn, that was the basis of our recommendation. Also, I'm looking at the development pattern for Culver Park. It is, definitely looks like an incomplete subdivision, but it's many decades old, and I'm sure there's a story there of why the development didn't continue and why Dory Miller and the other dead end didn't connect, but... didn't connect, but they looked that they were going to connect at some point in another east-west street that never happened. And then this parcel remained vacant for many years and was marketed again for either multifamily or industrial. Church bought it and responded in their site plan to their needs as well as the very vocal neighborhood concerns. So, that's my explanation. And again, we didn't feel there'd be traffic engineering within it, we didn't feel that there would be a traffic burden, that we wouldn't violate engineering practices, and we wouldn't violate the life safety needs to bring fire and police vehicles there.
I just have two quick follow-up questions, and actually, on the concept of, it, it's true that we try to serve neighborhood needs, at the same time, if we served my neighborhood need, we would block access to the university from Illinois Street. So, lots of people use my street, my street supposedly, to go to the university, and the same argument could be made, I don't want people to use the street that I live on to get to access to the university. So, I'm sure there's, that, that kind of logic, I think we have to be really careful because we have to be looking out for the best interest of all the people who live in our city, and I understand that sometimes there's additional impact. There was an additional impact in our neighborhood of putting a traffic light at Illinois and Lincoln to facilitate access. It means more traffic is on my street. It's also the case that it's, it's for the, the best of the whole community. So, I think we need to, to, as a community, look out for the interests of everyone and not just the people in our neighborhood. So, the questions I have are, it says that there will be a plan for pedestrian connectivity. Will that necessarily include paving that connects with the sidewalk?
Include paving?
Paving.
Or cement sidewalks.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk. Will it, will it necessarily include some kind of paved surface that connects with the existing sidewalks?
I think what we're looking for, it's a large site, and we're looking for a good way for people to get onto the site, if they're, move around the site, if they choose to walk, say, from the south. What we're hoping is that there will be at least pedestrian access to the site, to the site from the south, and certainly from the west where there will be the associated residential uses. So, we'll be looking for that connection, and also, say, you drive in that very large parking lot, can you get safely from the parking space into the church? So, those are the types of things that we'll be looking for, getting into the church and the other buildings, and also getting onto the site from other means and vehicles.
So, let me ask you a question. If somebody, will it, will it provide for someone in a wheelchair to use a paved surface to get access to the church from the neighborhood? So, will, will it be paved, or, and will it connect with the existing sidewalks?
Um-
Libby, I might be able to help here.
Potentially.
There's a side, you know, there are a couple of sidewalks that point up into where their parking lot would be, or where Phase Three, Phase Three building might be, and it wouldn't be that hard to conceive of that sidewalk extending across their property to their parking lot.
You know, that's a question I, I think we really should have the church's architect or church representative respond to and see what they're, what they see their needs as. That would be, there would not be an ADA requirement. I think the parking spaces would provide that and the drop-off. And there's certain grade requirements for pathways to be accessible to a wheelchair. So, I think I would ask them if that's something that they would plan or would see a need for.
And then, my second question has to do with what the future, there was mention of future road access to, from the west via Champaign. Can you just talk a little bit more about the location of that access, planned access?
I think that's something that's incredibly preliminary at this point. As I had mentioned, Champaign representatives came, and obviously, we talked with Champaign county, or Champaign planners. Our desire was to have some sort of access, probably most, most likely in the form of a, of an access drive as opposed to an, an road, a formal road of you, as you would think of it with a, you know, sixty-foot right-of-way. But that there would be some sort of network of internal roads that would hopefully include the extension of Fourth and Fifth Street in Champaign. So, there would be a road that would come near the, the border, and so there would be vehicular access from that direction as well, because the church is currently located at Fourth and Bradley in the city of Champaign, so obviously, the, a good number of their parishioners are from that area. So, we'd like to provide access from that direction, and that's kind of what we're thinking of. As far as something concrete, I don't think it's really gotten beyond the, the planning stages, because the church is still considering how to use their property to the west, and we've just expressed our, our desire to have that connection there.
I just want to raise the concern that I, with 1,100 people essentially being in this space, I don't know how many minutes it takes for a fire engine to get access to the church, additional minutes, because they have to go up and around and down, but I'm extremely concerned that if there's a fire in this congregation and we have to have fire truck access, that essentially, we're adding significant minutes to the number of, to the amount of time it would take to get access to this church. I, I, I just, from a safety perspective, from a pedestrian perspective, I, I don't like this design, and I'm concerned about what the, if there's a future road planned or a future access road planned, then perhaps that means that Champaign Fire might be able to get access to it quicker, more, more quickly than Urbana Fire.
It's worth noting that, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but the nearest fire station for Urbana would be just south of Bradley and Lincoln Avenue.
Very close.
Fairly close.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion concerning this ordinance? Ms. Barnes?
I would move to approve Plan Case Number 1956-SU-05.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bowersack, seconds. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bowersack.
Yeah, I, I have a few more questions. Matt, first off, I just wanted to make sure I understood the scope of this special use permit. This is just a special use permit for Phase One, and any of the Phase Two or Phase Three buildings would require, coming back to Plan Commission again?
It would actually be approval for all three phases, although it would be approval for all of those phases contingent upon this site plan, as we haven't received. I guess, just to clarify a little bit further, in Condition Three, it was said that vehicular access should be only provided via Carver Drive, or via Federal Drive until access from the west is provided, but then vehicular access is still limited from, or blocked from Carver and Dory Miller. Basically, we wanted to put a provision in here as written that would allow access to the west, but would require, but when that connection to the west would happen, it would still require the case to come back and receive reapproval from Plan Commission and City Council. But just to allow the ability, we didn't want Condition Three to forever limit connection, or access from Federal Drive.
Okay. Another question I have is, the, it appears the church owns a bunch of land here, and that the development is some in Urbana and some in Champaign, and the Urbana side development is all non-taxable, but the Champaign side, if it's residential, may be taxable properties? Is that right?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay. The one other point I would make is that I definitely agree with Danielle's concerns, that the street connectivity is a little funny, and I know that was discussed at Plan Commission, and we all know that, and so I encourage the owners of the property to keep us informed and, you know, keep working with you on how vehicular access and pedestrian path access can, can work. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Roberts?
Matt, you mentioned that one of the aspects that the Planning Commission had inquired about was a pedestrian connectivity plan, which would be prepared. Is that correct?
Yes.
You said that? So, we're looking at a, and I'm assuming that that has to do with not just how the people can trend, get from their cars into the church, but I would think that this must also, or am I wrong, that this would address how people who live in the neighborhood to the south would approach the church from Carver Drive or Dory Miller Drive?
Yeah, as Libby just discussed, there, there'd be some sort of connection, although I don't think anything has been formalized from those two areas, I guess.
Because I remember reading the discussion in the Planning Commission, I mean, you wouldn't want to have people in their Sunday clothes walking through mud of a football field or the softball field to get to their church, and it's rather a big hike here from that neighborhood into the church area. And it would seem to me that it would be very useful to know, and actually to, to see what is planned, because wouldn't there be some question about, well, there might be like a permission or right-of-way, a question about connecting to the, the drive itself, which is in Champaign, Carver Drive, and that subdivision is property in Champaign, and connecting, connecting the sidewalks, as Danielle Chinowitz was asking about, so that a person could indeed walk from the, in the subdivision all the way to the church? And we have no plan, or we can't see any concept for that here on this, this drawing.
Mr. Lewis?
I have to accuse myself of voting on this, but I have volunteered my services to the church early on to work with this plan. The complication that arises in the relationship between Champaign and Urbana being a borderline property is very complex because of the potential area between the two cities. There's a, it'll cause an easement, that, you know, who takes responsibility for what? So, it's going to be very complicated, and the third party is the people that own the property. So, they worked out the best, I think, arrangement in terms of appeasing those folks to the south by tree planting trees. But if you try to make any kind of significant connection, that would be a response of both design people of Urbana and Champaign to deal with that interconnection.
Ms., Ms. Barnes?
As far as the connectivity path for the pedestrians, in Item Five on our proposal, it says that the, it will be subject to review by our zoning administrator, as well as the city engineer. So, I think, you know, we don't, I don't feel the need to see any further detailed plan, and I think the zoning board also agreed that we could leave that in the hands of our, of our city staff.
Any further discussion? Ms. Chinowitz?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, which is to, is to change the Condition Number Five to the following: That a paved pedestrian connectivity plan, that a pedestrian connectivity plan, including a paved linking to existing sidewalks, shall be prepared and constructed, et cetera. So, that we simply just provide that kind of direction.
Okay, there's a, a motion by Ms. Chinowitz and second by Mr. Smythe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or is there any discussion, sorry? Any discussion?
I'd like to know how the owner's representatives feel about that.
Yeah.
I'm Bishop Lloyd Gwen, I'm from the Church of the Living God, I'm the pastor there. It really becomes complex because as the, as we come back to get the, the permission to bill special use permit, we, we have rules that are sort of changing. The first time we were here, there was no desire to have any connectivity. So, now to have the sidewalks put in, I don't even know how the residents of the community would feel about that.
Thank you.
Ms. Chinowitz?
Actually, I was on the former council, and we had a, a pretty lengthy debate about the issue of connectivity, and we refused, I think, the initial plan, which included some fencing or some barriers at that location, and I, I think that the former council, we do have a new council, so-
Right.
It won't be different, but the former council was particularly concerned with making sure that we continue the urban development with sidewalks, et cetera. So, I, I think that, not to necessarily contradict you, but I think that, that this is a longstanding concern, and it's not specific to this case. Actually, we had very similar kind of issues that came up with the Aldi loc, excuse me, the Aldi grocery store at the location of 130 and 150, and pedestrian connectivity, et cetera. So, it's kind of a longstanding concern of the council.
If, if we would go back and revisit, we will discover that we were supposed to have a follow-up meeting with the, with the residents of the Carver Park Association to really ensure that there was very little connectivity. They didn't want us to be connected, we talked about the type of barriers that we would put up. Fencing was even suggested at one point. Now, that's no longer on, on the table. It seems like the Carver Park Association leaders have somewhat softened their position, and there, there's a change of, of leadership there as well. We're, we're sort of open to, to what, whatever is, is pleasing with the residents, as well as with the Urbana City Council. We'll do pretty much what needs to be done. But, but the one thing is, I, I don't want to say that that's something that we'll do, and then we end up, the community feeling like we betrayed them by not saying that that was going to be the case going in, and now we come here and change the rules. They're not here because that's not what we talked about in the community meeting, and that was one of the criteria before we come back before the Urbana City Council. So, I don't want to seem unfair to them, or if I'm going to agree to one thing with them, and then when we come to the meeting, I'm going to do something that they have no idea we're going to do.
It's my understanding, actually, that the, that in Number Five here, we've already, there's already been a suggestion through the Plan Commission of some kind of pedestrian connectivity. And the amendment that's on the table just stipulates specifically that it would be paved, so that folks who may have accessibility issues and don't have access to cars would be able to, to go to your church. I know, I, I walk that neighborhood, and I've spoken, I know, I can think of several residents off the top of my head who I actually helped to drive to the polls, who live just south of Bradley, who may be attending your church, who are, are disabled. So, I just, I think that, that the, just to clarify, the amendment is not to say that there won't be, that, that we're adding pedestrian connectivity. That, that's something that was added by our staff and by our Plan Commission. It's that we would stipulate that it would be a paved surface, and that, of course, you know, it would connect with the existing sidewalks. I don't see any reason why pedestrian connectivity plan essentially means that it's going to link to the sidewalks. I just want to make sure that this council ensures that that's the case. It's also the case, and I think this is, this is part of the consensus process, is that, you know, you represent the interests of the church, that the neighborhood represents the interests of the neighborhood, and that the City Council represents the interest of the community as a whole. And so, connectivity issues are really an issue of the community as a whole, in addition to, I think, an issue for your parishioners, those who may want to access it from the south and who won't be driving. So-
And I remember, I'm sorry, I remember very clearly the, the discussion prior to that. Even the, the suggestion or the, the requirement from the Plan Commission that there, that we do connect with the community, the community didn't even know about that. That, that came up in the Plan Commission. So, so that's something that we're sort of adding to, and now we're adding the sidewalk. And I just, I know, I know how people think. The next thing they're going to think is that you're going to come back and you're going to have vehicles coming through there, and they didn't show up tonight, and they didn't show up at the Plan Commission because they understood, they thought they understood how it was going to progress. And, and I'm okay with it. We'll do whatever the city of Urbana wants to be done, the city of Champaign, whatever desires they have, and the community of Carver Park. And I remember vividly, you were on the Plan Commission, and you were very bothered by the suggestion that, that there would be a buffer and, and there would be no access to, to the property, which I, I thought was pretty firm, and I thought maybe that, that they really needed some type of access to, to the property then. But, again, I'm not trying to force my will on them, and I'm trying to, really to make everybody happy here. I don't know if that's possible, but at least I'm going to put forth a, a good effort.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chinowitz, would you please spell out what the amendment was again, please?
Yes, it's, it's that Number Five be changed to, that a paved pedestrian connectivity plan, including paved linking to existing sidewalks, shall be prepared and constructed, et cetera, as it's written.
Including paved linking sidewalks?
The paved linking to existing sidewalks.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about this amendment?
Not about the amendment itself, no.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment then. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
No.
No. Never roll calls.
Yeah, I think that the motion carried, but let's have a roll call.
I'll say yes.
Sure.
Dennis says yes, though we have a majority.
I was still thinking.
Okay, all right. The motion carries, or the amendment carries, so let's vote on the motion as amended, and this would require a roll call vote.
And would this be the, the entire motion?
Right.
Could I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
It's really more of a statement. This is really odd. Here we have a, this is a church development, and I have nothing, I mean, it's a very nice church development, and it's adjacent to a neighborhood, and you're planning to build your own neighborhood to the west, and yet, it's a church that's in the middle of the city, but it's- to the west and yet it's a church that's in the middle of the city, but it's treated as if it's a suburban church because really, basically, the only way people can get to it is if they have a car. And you're not really interested in the connectivity issue of the sidewalks. I don't know how many people, maybe nobody actually lives in the neighborhood directly to the south who'd be attending your church or maybe a few people and maybe you don't know. But it's just one of these odd, weirdly positioned realities where even though there are residential areas adjacent to the property, nobody's going to be able to get there by walking. And I guess as long as everybody in your church realizes that's the case and you have a bus or whatever you want to offer people, I guess I don't personally care if you can walk from the south to your church or not. I mean, I'm not sure. I mean, it seems like it would make sense and it seems like connectivity within the community is an asset to a church.
I, I fully agree.
So it's very strange.
Oh yeah, it really is. I agree with that wholeheartedly. I do not oppose in any way having sidewalks to the property. I don't, I don't oppose to cars driving through there. Myself, I never did. But again, there are a number of senior citizens in that area and it is an old, established community and they have their, their deep-rooted desires and passions for that community. And so what I'm simply trying to do is make the best of a somewhat interesting situation. If they could walk, it would be ideal. If they could drive, it would be ideal. And I think some of the residents feel exactly as I feel, but when you deal with, with senior citizens that are passionate about, about their feelings, I would rather sacrifice what I desire not to infringe upon their desires in these latter years of their lives so that they don't feel like they're being pushed aside or their neighborhood is being overtaken by a church that has so many people that are foreign to their community that are just going to be coming in and out. And so I'm really open to whatever we can, whatever we can do. For the church, looking at the church, it is in the best interest of the church that we have as many roads leading to the church. All roads I wish could lead to the church. I really do.
Okay, any other questions on this? Yes, Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, this is actually a question for Chief Munt. Down the road as the apartments to the east develop and they're the, you know, I think I brought up the issue of extending the bike path north of Bradley into the University Commons Apartments area. They can obviously expand a third phase into and up against the church property, actually both church properties there since we have another church that abuts that property right along Bradley. As that apartment complex grows bigger, at what point do they necessitate a second means of egress, an entrance for a fire department?
First, I would have to refer back to the codes if we ever really need a separate total entrance to the, to the facility due to the fact that we would have multiple accesses within the complex to most buildings. And that's what we'd be looking for first, is that while we may have one entrance coming off of Lincoln Avenue, is that we could surround by coming in from multiple directions, which is our primary concern. If we did not have that, then we would insist upon a second access to the property.
Okay. So they could, you know, so we could end up with apartment buildings all the way up against the property, both properties then, both churches essentially, and, and the roads could go to those buildings but not pass on through to, to, to the new church?
That is, again, I'd have to refer back to make sure we're saying that correctly, but I would feel very comfortable in saying that the buildings in any one of these expansion of these apartment complexes could extend all the way over to the property line, but you would still most likely have access road all the way around the backside of them. You'd have parking on the, on this case, on the west-hand side, giving us access to all four sides of the buildings with our apparatus.
Okay, Chief, are you satisfied there's enough access from Federal Drive to meet the needs of this church through, across all three?
Personal preference or code?
Personal preference.
Personal preference. I think this will work. I was going to meet with the gentleman shortly after the session here to express my concerns about Phases Two and Three.
Okay.
And just about distances from the parking lot because that's our primary concern for initial response units, what we can deploy in the first couple of minutes is essential in this situation with the population density that can be there at any given time. But I think with the access, the location of the main church building, the parking lot, we're looking just fine. It's just making sure that we discuss as a group that the auxiliary structures don't become too far away, too far detached from the parking lot. If that were the case, my preference would be that you'd have your street access to come in from the south side, just going back to Danielle's question about time.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chinowitz?
Just two comments. One is I applaud your efforts to add to the affordable housing stock of Champaign-Urbana and I didn't know that, last time this came to council, there wasn't a discussion of that and I'm happy to see that because even though it doesn't pertain to this Plan Case because we're in dire need of affordable housing in this community. So appreciate your efforts to do that. And the second is that I will be supporting this. I do so reluctantly. It's not, it's not ideal, but I do want to honor the work of all the parties to come to some consensus on this, so.
Okay, would the clerk please call the rule? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I'm staying.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, the ordinance passes as amended. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have appointment of the city attorney and I am recommending the appointment of James L. Getz as Urbana City Attorney. Mr. Getz is a graduate of Northwestern University Law School. He has extensive experience in local government, both as an attorney and as the former mayor of Freeport, Illinois. In addition, he is a former state senator. He is active in the Illinois Municipal League and is highly regarded by his peers. And I have the details of his resume attached and if his appointment is approved by the city council, he will begin work on or shortly after October 10th, 2005.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Smythe, second by Mr. Bowersack. Is there any question or comment? Mr. Smythe?
I'd like to welcome Mr. Getz on board. He can start tomorrow as far as I'm concerned.
You have to vote first.
Well, I said tomorrow. I said tomorrow. I assume this is the standard new contract that we have approved?
We're going to be working on the contract. We have not approved a contract yet. I've got some concerns about it, but this is just the agreement that he will start and we'll work out the details and bring them back to you.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'll bet on that one. Thank you very much.
Great.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the city council? If not, this...